I'd like to call this meeting to order. If we could all stand for Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are present. We don't have any proclamations, commendations, or certified awards.
Excuse me, Mayor Council. Approval of the agenda, and I do have an agenda modification.
You told me we didn't.
Just from Committee of the Whole. Mayor Council, it is to add on item J nine, which is for the purchase of squad car video body more camera system upgrade with WatchGuard. As was discussed at Committee of the Whole today.
Motion to approve the agenda with the committee.
Second. I have a motion from Councilman Lawrence here in a second. With Councilman Lundeen, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Five oh for the record. Moving on, approval of city council minutes.
Make a motion to approve. Say again.
I have a motion from Councilman Lundeen to approve. And a second by Councilman Paulson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Council A five will vote. Announcements, parking, recreation, and culture board meeting Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, at six P M. City council meeting Tuesday, April second, twenty nineteen, at seven P M. With the E D A meeting immediately following that council meeting. We have no council committee reports.
I have a couple of things to discuss.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Lawrence.
Something I wanted to update the public on from the Committee of the Whole meeting that occurred at five P M this evening. Those are now recorded on video. I've been requested to record those on video for quite some time and have been denied by this council. Today, specifically, Councilmember Paul Burgley stated he doesn't even want to video-record the council meetings. He just wants to go back to auto-recording, which we used to do, which is a total disservice to our community. We saw tonight in our citizen input that residents are watching these, and they're watching us, and they should, they deserve to be able to watch us and watch what we do. So I'm just hoping that our council in the future decides to start recording those meetings or the public can speak up and say, "We want all the meetings recorded at their city hall." It's very easy to do it. It's not going to take much staff time, especially if we go to YouTube Live. Right now, we're not live, and it doesn't take very much staff, it takes extra staff time. But if we go live, it's not going to take any staff time to get these meetings up there. And this council has chosen not to do it and not to move forward with it. In addition to that, I got a comment, a call from a resident of the township, one of the townships this year, that had a fire at his residence. He was billed by the fire department for almost ten thousand dollars. Which, to me, doesn't seem right or ethical. If the fire department is collecting tax based on, based off of call volume and call votes, and they're assessing that, those calls back to the cities, and the cities and townships are paying the fire department for their service, why is the fire department billing if you have a fire? That would make me, as residents, not want to have the fire department out there if they're going to saddle me with a ten thousand dollar plus bill if I have a fire. This resident was extremely upset. He called me because he thought we ran the fire department. I told him we don't, but it's something I think we need to look into. I'm going to be placing that on the next agenda to discuss that with the chief and everybody else. I just think it doesn't seem very ethical at all.
They billed the homeowner, not the insurance company?
They billed the homeowner to bill the insurance company, but if you don't have the full amount covered, you're going to be paying that out of your pocket. There's several states that researches, there's several states that this is illegal in. Yes, and it's not illegal in Minnesota, but it's just, it's, if it's not illegal, it doesn't seem ethical to saddle your city service. It's like me going to somebody's house in my job as a police officer, arresting somebody and setting them a bill. I just don't think it's right. So I just want to have that discussion with the chief.
Councilman Lawrence, I called the chief on Sunday and discussed this with him. Anytime a fire is over eight hours long, they bill that at use and anything else that occurs and costs. Anytime there's a fire over eight hours. Second of all, there was other costs occurred where they hired dirt works to come in and move stuff around.
And they also damaged the guy's system on the floor, too, at the same time, which they're not paying for.
That I cannot answer for, but I am going to answer the fire call and what was charged, because I was unaware of that call charge. They have done that, have done that since the fire department was inactive, always have. As long as they can remember, it's always been done. So you'll have to, if you want, you can definitely contact Chief Jankovic and have that discussion with him, but that is the answer to it.
Yeah, like I said, this has been my famous line over the past two months. It might be legal, but it's not, it's not ethical. It doesn't seem right to, why, why would I, as a homeowner, if my building's going to burn down to the ground, why would I even want the fire department there then if they're going to set me a ten thousand dollar? They legally have to be there. The fire department has to be there. They're required to be there. They're required by law to put that fire out to protect the environment and protect property.
I agree.
But if I'm in a rural setting and my building's not going to affect anybody's property and it's burning, why would I want the fire department out there? We should want the fire department out there to protect stuff, and they shouldn't be saddled with a bill. And not every agency does it, and we pay the bill. We pay forty percent of all the bills in the county.
No, that's not, that's not true. We don't, we cover forty percent of their budget. This is above and beyond the budget cost.
But...
So, so, so let me finish, please. So, a fire that happens out in Oxford Township where this was at, the city has absolutely nothing to do with that call.
Not true. We might not have anything to do with the call, but we have to do with the bill.
No, we don't have anything to do with the bill. No.
Explain when you're done, also. That's not, I'll explain my side.
You're, you're, you're barking up a tree that has no bark on it at this moment. That is going to go down as a call run through Oxford Township, plain and simple. Just like a call that comes in here. Like Sandy Fire District goes out to an accident on Highway sixty-five. Nobody gets billed for that, not one person. They go out on a call on forty-seven and five. Nobody gets billed for that, period, because there is no way to bill that. So, somebody coming from the peak of Kansas comes to Isani, gets in an accident at sixty-five and five, guess who's paying that bill? You and I and every taxpayer in, in the fire district pays that bill.
Which we should.
Which, no, we shouldn't. I shouldn't pay for somebody that doesn't even live in this community. To have my service go out and go out there and take care of something because of somebody's negligence? No, I don't agree with that. I've been arguing for the fact that they should have been billing insurance companies for the last five years, that they always should bill, but it is not feasible to do.
That was Mayor Wimmer's reasoning too, Steve.
So, now, here's how we bill. We bill a call for services, a call for service. A medical bill is one call for service. An eight alarm fire is one call for service. Is that correct, Steve?
An eight alarm fire, if it's calling in for mutual aid, that we don't pay anything for mutual aid.
We don't pay anything for mutual aid, but both of those are billed by the fire district. Just one call for service.
It is, yes.
Okay. So the city of Isani, the, the fire district takes their calls for services for each township and the city, and they figure out a percentage. And then they take their total, their total dollar amount that they budget, and they break that up into percentages of calls for service. And that is how it's billed. The city of Isani has a higher volume of, of calls because, A, we have more people, B, we have more medicals because we have more people, and we have more people that use the medical service, and those are all billed as one call for service. We have less fires in the city of Isani than they have in the, in the townships.
And I've argued the same.
So, for, for you to say that we do not pay for that fire at the kennels that this one we're talking about, we don't pay for that, that is not true, because that is billed as one call, and the medical that came out today probably is billed as one call. So if those are the only two calls in the county for a year, we would pay fifty percent of the fire department's bill, and then we would be paying fifty percent of that fire. So that's how...
That's not true. It's posed by, based on the amount of calls that you have, is how it's billed out. So if Bradford Township has ninety-five calls, they take the percentage of ninety-five calls, which is their run count. Their run count is, gets determined how they get billed. The city of Isani's run count is higher than anybody else's. It is because of medical run. It has nothing to do with it being a fire call or a medical call. It is a call, it doesn't matter what it is. So, so you, so you partially are right, but you're all partially wrong, because we're only paying for the amount of calls that we make, that make into the city of Isani. That's how it's billed. One thing that they've wanted to do, and the previous mayor, Mayor Wimmer, wanted to have this put in the taxing district, which we all agree upon, but the way the bylaws are written, we can't get it done, because you have to have unanimous vote to have that changed. And to get that unanimous vote, you'd have to get the townships to relinquish what they think is their control, which they're not going to relinquish their control on the board. It's still going to have the same function, but they will not vote for it, and we have fought for it and fought for it. And so did the previous fire chief, Bolzine, so did Chief Al Jankovic. They've all have fought to try to get this done, and it's just not going to be able to happen.
It's, it was set up, it had the time to be their own district at one point, but I get that. However, it's set up the way it is, and we have to pay it. We have to pay the bill, but it's, we can't charge our residents for police service. Our police go to accidents, too. We can't charge, uh, charge an accident to the insurance company. If somebody's underinsured, which a lot of people can be, especially if they've had their place for a really long time, they can be underinsured, then the fire department taxes them with a ten thousand dollar bill, and they have to pay that. That's not fair.
There's a difference between, between our police department and the fire district.
No, they're not.
Yes, there is. They are a separate entity.
Steve, right.
They are a separate entity, but they both provide a public safety service, which is a, which is a, which is a, which is something that government provides. We don't charge individual residents for plumbing the road aside from taxes. You know, that's, it's the same thing.
There's, there's no law states that you have to have a fire department. There's no law states that. So where does that come from?
It's a public service that we provide.
We provide that public service. You use that key word. We, as a taxpayer, provide that service. So that service has gone through the fire district. You don't need a fire department. There's nothing states that we have to have a fire department.
There's nothing states we have to have a police department.
Okay, then let's get rid of that.
I'm not saying that.
Well, that, that's what you're, that, that is what you're driving to.
I'm just saying, I don't want the fire department.
This is an argument that, that you and I could go on for hours and hours and hours on, and let me not, not going to have.
Let's move forward. Can I, can I, can I say something? I just want the public to know that, based on what we did before this administration was, we, um, we taped all of the city council meetings, and I got comment from many of the public that it was good enough to tape, and, um, and I just felt with the YouTube thing, it was too much, maybe, and maybe we didn't need it. Whether people watch us or listen to us, you get the same information. I want to be as transparent as Mr. Lawrence here, and, uh, and so it's only fair to be transparent in everything. And so, you know, if we want to ream everybody, well, we'll wait till we get to that subject. But the number two thing, this is council committee reports, and I got reviewed over the calls when, when it wasn't my committee, and just because you get a call, that's calls for getting up in front of the public and say, and, and doing this as a, uh, things that are not on the agenda. This was not a council committee report. That was totally out of order.
Something that's not on the agenda.
Exactly, and it shouldn't have been in a council committee report, period, in a sense. No, because you didn't let me talk right after you said that I didn't, didn't want to YouTube it, so now it's my turn to talk. Okay, I'm done. Now it's your turn to talk. Thank you.
In the past, what we've done for as long as I'm on, I'm on council, the council committee reports are for us to update what we know to council and ask for things to be placed on the agenda if we need to. That's what we have always done. You can use the committees that you use, or you can use the input that you have. Many, many times, people have came up in a committee report and talked about something that they have. My question initially was to ask, to get the, bring it up to the public, bring it up to you guys, and get it put on the next agenda to talk to the chief of, the fire chief about it, and I don't agree with it. I cannot agree with it. Please let me talk.
Can you, can you, can you, can you come up in a, in a, in a council?
Please let me talk. You guys cannot agree with it if you want. That's fine, but we need to get it put on a council agenda to have the discussion.
And I say we do that.
They're right here.
All right, then, gentlemen, this discussion is done, okay? Let's put this on the agenda if that's what we need to be. Let's move forward here, please. Business items, Lexipool discussion. Lieutenant Myers, are you present? If you would step forward, sir. This is something that I put on the agenda myself. I've done my homework as far as Lexipool goes. As stated on this council, one individual in particular that he felt we didn't have proper training in our police department, this would be a phenomenal tool just for that. Lieutenant Myers, if you would care to explain the Lexipool system, sir?
Lexipool is just a service that provides policy and procedure that's updated. Currently, our policy and procedures have to be updated individually, which we did one this afternoon at Committee of the Whole with legal advice. It's just an option that's on the agenda that Mayor Johnson brought up, so.
This is, um, essentially, this'll quiz the officers every once in a while, correct?
It's a policy manual at the whole, and there is a training, daily training for every policy and that policy as a whole.
So keep some French on their toes, so to speak.
Are you for it against it, or do you think it's a good thing?
From an administrative standpoint, it is a good policy that covers every aspect that administration would need. Councillors train out of it, gives them the confines, and our policies all need to be reviewed, and that's a high task, and that's what we started with this afternoon in one policy.
From an officer perspective, what's your opinion?
I've worked under it. It is time consuming slightly, and you take ten, fifteen minutes before every shift or during a shift to do the training on policy. However, it does give you the guidelines of what you should and should not do.
Okay. When you have worked under it, and I'm guessing that's with the sheriff's offices, pages of that policy?
There's eight hundred and some pages.
How many pages is, how big is our policy right now? Do you know?
I, but, yes, I mean, it would be less than that.
It's manageable, right?
Be less than that.
Okay. I work under, under Lexipool. I've worked under Lexipool since probably two thousand and ten in my private job. It does provide a service of policy. That's what it does. Lexipool's, Lexipool's position is to protect the administration, not protect the officers. And it's very clear in their policy that it's made to protect the administration from lawsuits and not protect the officers. Policy in police, in policing is to protect the officers, protect the administration as a whole, and is to keep them as a team and keep them running according to their policy properly. Lexipool's daily training bulletins, my agency used them for a period of time and didn't find a benefit in them, and we don't use them anymore. They were easy, very, very simple and easy, and you could do them without, you could pass the test without even following the plan. So they're not much for training. I think we need to pull all of our officers, we need to have them speak with our H R director individually and see what they want. When I worked under a policy that was reasonable and manageable, I could read that policy in a period of time, and I knew it like the back of my hand. Our current policy, there's policies that have came up in my agency that even the administration didn't know was a policy. There's policies in my policy right now that are stuff we've never done, and it's there, it's policy, and I have to ask permission for certain things, but something our office has never done, and it's just popped into Lexipool. That's the issues with Lexipool. L E L S, I would highly recommend you guys to reach out to your L E L S, um, people. I think they have a pretty good stance and a pretty good take on it, that if your agency does not give the officers all the time in the world to memorize this seven to eight hundred to a thousand page policy, you're going to have a failure to train issue, and when a policy violation comes up, L E L S will back that officer one hundred percent, and they will probably win. And that's why I fought against this from, from day one, when Chief Hill initially wanted to bring it up, I took it out of the budget. I think we need to personally update our policy. We can do that by contacting many agencies, using attorney, we can get more updated policies, and we can get an updated policy in a reasonable time. But buying a package Lexipool system, it does not give you what you need to do. It does not give you the big, might give the administration some, some, they think they're protected, and they think they're not going to get sued, but in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't do anything except confuse everybody and reduce morale. And Mayor, you talked about morale earlier, the last thing you want to do is kill morale, and I can guarantee Lexipool will kill morale.
I guarantee it wouldn't.
With the agencies that do use it, that seen other ones, gets up to the system administrator as far as to make sure that they edit their policies to fit their agency.
Correct. So essentially, it wouldn't be eight hundred pages, or hasn't had to be.
Exactly.
So we need a motion?
Plus, you have to pay them every year for...
You do have to pay them.
Which we don't if we just update our policy and keep it updated.
Is something in your favor, in favor of the town?
We need to update policies across the board, so if we don't do that, we would need to seek outside legal advice on every one of them on a continual basis.
So this would help?
It would help. It covered on a continual basis.
And, and we could look at it as a legal advice standpoint to where we're paying a lawyer now for this, to where Lexipool just takes care of it.
What is the cost? Do we know the cost?
You know the cost, Lieutenant?
Yes.
I believe I found it was fifty, fifty-five, thirty for our size agency per, per year.
I still think we need to pull the officers, we need to know what they want.
And I won't disagree with that, Councilman Lawrence here. Your, your one opinion, I think having their opinion would probably keep out of you.
Bring in many, many other opinions about Lexipool, and, and I'm putting myself out on a platter, out on a platter for my agency, this is being recorded, it's public, and it's, my agency uses it, and it's not liked by the officers. The administration likes it, but not officers, and that's not fair. When we had our own policy, everybody agreed, every, we, whether we agreed or disagreed with a certain policy, we all knew it. That's why we want to see that.
Been a lot of person twenty years, as a user of any policy procedures, you don't like all of them, no matter which format they come out.
But at least you know them. That's the problem.
Depending on what agency you come from, I've came from agencies that have had eight hundred paper policies and procedures.
And then we bring up the same issue, if it's not manageable. You, you have to be able to know.
This would be manageable, though. You get to edit it.
I understand you get to edit and tweak it, but Lexipool, call other agencies that use it, Lexipool updates, and when they update, they blank stuff in there, and it's, there's some stuff that you cannot take out of Lexipool, that's guaranteed, it has to stay in Lexipool, and there's some stuff that you can edit. And I'm not an administrator, and so I don't know all that, but I think we need to reach out to agencies that use it.
We've reached out to Bram, the sheriff's office in Cambridge, which are the four, are three agencies in our company that do use Lexipool. And I do know it's a hundred percent out of that administrator's role to edit that, because otherwise, if you say, if you just push out what Lexipool gives you, you're going to get stuff that doesn't apply to your agency, and it'll be not applicable.
And how do these agencies in Isani come feel about it? What, sir, do you want to, did you ask them?
They're the ones that are recommending it because of what they, they've been using, the sheriff's office has been using probably longest, because I think, if you can correct me, when they came out with it, the sheriff's association recommended it.
I think the sheriff's association recommended for every agency to use it, and that's when they all started using it.
Right, and that was probably what, seven, eight years ago, and the sheriff's association recommended to it as a whole.
I guess I wouldn't be opposed to seeing what the other officers feel about it. They're the ones that are going to have to deal with it.
I would entertain then to table this until further, um, homework is done, so to speak. We can definitely ask the other officers and see how they feel about it.
Is there a motion there?
Yes, sir, I would entertain that motion.
Does the motion be tabled?
It's just discussion anyway.
All right.
Well, it is a business item, Councilman Burgley. My fault.
Okay.
Mayor Council, I made, just for clarification, would this then, the information that we find out be brought to the next council or Committee of the Whole?
Probably as council.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Myers.
Thanks.
Moving on to J two, parking on West Side of Dillon Avenue Northeast. I've had a numerous number of phone calls in regards to the street, to where if a snowplow, fire truck, ambulance, anything tries to get through there, it's hard because people are parking on both sides. This is where, um, the federal co-op is and rendezvous coffee shop. And you can park, I, I strongly agree that we continue to park on the, the coffee shop side. However, um, I was thinking of putting no parking on the federal co-op side, so it's easier for emergency vehicles, snowplows, et cetera, to get through and down that street.
Is this just in the winter months?
No, I would do it year round, because I'm a little worried about fire trucks, ambulances.
Where, where did this come from?
Um, this has came from a number of residents that's around that area, and I've also heard from a fire department snowplow driver. I've actually spent four hours in a snowplow myself this winter on a ride along observation and, uh, basis and, and observed it myself, and I was shocked that snowplow driver did not take a mirror off going down that street, but kudos to him, he's obviously a talented snowplow guy.
They shouldn't be parked there when we're snowplowing.
They are, sir.
Well, if you're out plowing during the day, just try and stay on top of the snowstorm.
Don't we have norms that says if there's so much snow, we, and we, we can't be parked on the road during the day?
Not during the day, it ends at eight E M.
I understand, that's the, that's the standard parking all winter long for, for cleaning, you can't park at night all winter long, so we, but after, do we have any orders that says during the snowfall, you can't park on the road?
Not that I'm aware of, not really.
Really? Okay. That might be something to look into, too, because most places I've ever seen have, have their, their standard ones, so they can clean up, but then, during, if there is a snowfall over two inches, you can't park on any road.
Councilmember, you may be thinking of like when cities declare a storm emergency, then they're not able to park on, sometimes cities may state like on the east or west side of the street or something like that.
That's the bigger cities, the...
Yeah, we don't have anything like that that I'm aware of.
The size that I look and just say, once there's two inches of snow, you can't be on the road if you want to.
Rendezvous would be out of business real quick, we did that, because they don't have much of a parking lot. Federal co-op, it's a huge parking lot.
Yeah, they can still park on their side.
But once the roads clear, they can park.
I'm saying if you can't have anybody parking on the road during the snow at lunch hour, it ain't going to happen.
Oh, yeah.
It's just not going to work.
But once the roads clear, they, they can park there, so as long as the city made that...
Where does everybody go until the road's cleared? They just drive around the block?
Don't park there.
What I'm saying is a lot of businesses don't have a parking lot. They use on-street parking during, if you want to go get a cup of coffee, rendezvous at noon on Monday, and it's snowing out. You're telling that customer he can't go there?
As well as residents as well.
Yeah, and residents.
Residents on that road all have parking lot, I believe. There's a few apartments, right? I don't even know if there's a house.
Oh, there's houses on that.
There's houses on and down.
Or, or I wasn't on there.
And the church on the corner of Main and...
And that apartment.
The church has their own parking lot.
Correct.
Has anyone talked to the businesses? Because I just suggested this when we were, when we used to do Public Works Committee, and I think we talked about this, and, and, and seems to me that Warren, whatever his name is, Thornburg, or Thornquist, whatever his last name is, and the guy across the street, the manager across the street, tried to hammer out a policy, and they couldn't figure out arcing, and they went back and forth with the city and those two, and so I'm just, I'm just telling you that this has been trying to be hammered out before, and I'm not saying I'm not in for it or against it, I'm just wondering if, did, did we talk to them on this one?
We did not.
Okay. I would, I would encourage you to talk to them, because.
They actually have to talk to the business owners in that area.
They, they've been back and forth on that.
Mayor Council and staff, I would also recommend that we ask engineering to take a look at it, because there are some guidelines of when parking should, should or should not be allowed, depending on how wide the street, the street is. I would ask that engineering take a look in that and report back.
I believe Mr. Cook already did. Did you not, sir?
Yeah, I, uh, I looked into the, the road widths, um, and it is wide enough to, uh, to do no parking on the one side, and, um, I guess obviously there's parking on both sides right now, and so they eliminated parking on one side to just improve the, you know, travel lane width and parking lane width for the, uh, the remaining side. So that'd be definitely acceptable.
However, we probably should talk to the businesses. Councilman Berkeley, I'll, I'll give you that, so. I don't know if we can.
I'll bring it back after you talk to the businesses.
I concur.
No, it's tabled. I, I moved to table that till we talk to the businesses.
It's just, again, it's a business item, it's all great.
Discussion.
Moving on, J. Three, resolution, uh, 2019 to continue discussion of employee options. I would entertain a motion to hand this off to Labor Attorney Susan Hanson to negotiate and, and continue talks with his employee's attorney on his future employment with the city of Iceni. So.
Um, where, what is the, since we reinstated the chief last two weeks ago, what's he been doing since then?
Mayor Council, Mr. Gene Hill has been still on paid administrative leave at this time.
But did we reinstate him with the demotion?
No.
That was not. I don't think anything in that meeting that we're continuing to state necessarily. I just, the motion was to.
It was not concluded at what he would be demoted down to.
Later. So, interesting.
I have made the motion to pass this to our labor attorney, Susan Hanson, to continue talks with this individual's attorney. You can't even look at it. Okay, thank you, Mr. Berkeley. I've made the motion, as well as, uh, Councilman Berkeley has seconded. Uh, all in favor, please say aye. All right. Those opposed, say nay. You did not state anything, Councilman Lawrence, sir? So you're sustaining?
No, I'm not sustaining. It's just Jose's.
That passes five oh. Ms. Wood? Moving on to the resolution approving revision to Rome River BMX Association temporary vendor policy. Ms. Wood?
Mayor Council, this is to look at an annual review of having a tenant within the BMX associations within Iceni Marina BMX, um, grouping to have vendors in there. This is that they wanted to add in additional language, language about eight days in a calendar year. Staff is recommending to approve as provided.
Make a motion to accept.
I have a motion from Councilman Berkeley to accept. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, Councilman Lundin. And a second, my Councilman Berkeley.
So, so Josie, I have a quick question. The eight days given, is that just for extra vendors, not including their bike shop that's in there?
No, that is, well, yes, that would be in addition. We do have it in our policy that has been here, that it's not exceed 50 in a calendar year. They wanted to bring it down to eight times per vendor and be actually more restrictive than what we were restrictive.
We had 50 total, correct?
Correct.
And now they want eight per vendor. Is there a limit on the vendors they can have or anything, or?
Well, it would just be up to that 50 mark. That would be their discretion.
Okay. All right, so it's still?
Still within the confines that we had.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Are you done now?
Yeah, I just asked my question.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five to oh vote on that, Ms. Wood. A resolution advising the city of Iceni rain garden incentive program policy.
Mayor Council, we have this great rain garden incentive program, and we wanted to not have it be too restrictive, so we did some revisions, and that was to include property owner instead of just resident, because we recognize that there may be businesses that may also wanna partake in this great opportunity. We also provided for a project assessment, which will help staff to help our residents and business owners who want more information about getting involved with this incentive program, to help them guide their program with what they wanna do fits within the program. Staff is recommending to approve as provided.
Any discussion on this item?
Make a motion to approve, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to approve, and a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five oh vote. A resolution for discontinuing interim chief.
Mayor Council, we have Lieutenant Myers, who has, within his job description, as acting chief in his or her absence, which is provided as Exhibit A in front of you. And at this time, staff is recommending that we discontinue interim chief duties with Officer Dustin Noreen and appoint Lieutenant Myers as acting chief, as is lined out within his job description duties.
Any discussion on this matter?
Make a motion to approve, second.
I have a motion, motion by Lundin, and a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor, say aye. All right, aye. All opposed, same sign. Five oh vote.
Did you have something to say?
I did.
Oh, I asked for discussion on that, Councilman.
I was trying to say something. You were quick.
Sorry.
I was gonna say, we should all pass along our thank yous to Investigator Dustin Noreen.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. For the time that he did under a difficult situation, so.
And I heard nothing but positive comments from officers I spoke to, so.
I would agree.
And Mayor Council, I made, from staff's perspective as well, very thankful for what he provided to the city in that role.
So I don't know who takes care of that, if we get a thank you card or we all sign it.
We could send him a letter, absolutely. Or email something saying thanks for what you've done. I think that'd be efficient.
Just look at the number and say thank you.
Or that too.
Well, I can do that too. It's nice to have an official.
You both. Resolution on the 2019 storm system maintenance award recommendation, Mr. Cook?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, we, uh, this is our, uh, our rebid of the previous two years of, uh, storm maintenance, along with the 2019 work. So we regrouped the three years together, um, and we bid it earlier in the season than we have in the past, and we allowed more time, and it, uh, it appeared we got much more favorable bids. Uh, we did only receive two, but the, the low bid was 72,000 under our, uh, budget. So we recommend awarding this project to Dirtworks Inc. in the amount of 216,094 dollars.
Any discussion on this matter? Any motions?
Motion to approve, same.
I have a motion by Councilman Berkeley to approve, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five oh, Ms. Wood. Uh, resolution for the pavement management project award recommendation. Mr. Cook, once again.
So this is for the, uh, the program 2019 pavement maintenance work, uh, that's in the capital improvement plan. Uh, again, we received two bids, uh, with a low bid being over 25,000 below our budgeted amount for this year's work. Uh, so we're recommending award of the project to Aztec Corporation, the amount of 221,861 dollars and six, 862 dollars and 86 cents.
Any discussion on this?
I just have a question. That's a considerably lower bid than the other three, of other two. And is there any, any red flag that come near or anything that we run into problems with?
No, um, Aztec, uh, was actually the ones that did our work, uh, two years ago. They did perfectly good. I work with them all the time. They, uh, they simply gave us lower prices on the, the bituminous cost. Uh, we have some milling overlay work and, uh, some seal-toe work this year, and, and the biggest price difference was in that, uh, bituminous cost. The, the third bid on that list isn't a bid, it's the engineer's estimate that we were projecting the price to be at, and so they were 10% below our estimate, but.
Fred Murray, Paul Hardaway.
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept.
Same.
I get a motion by Councilman Lundin to accept, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Five oh vote. Approving the consent agenda.
Mayor Council, we have the addition of business item J. Nine, which is for the purchase of the squad car video body worn camera system upgrade with WatchGuard. This was discussed at committee of the whole this, uh, this evening. And the funding source would be Fund 920 with an amount not to exceed 65,000 in total.
I make a motion to approve, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to approve, and a second by Councilman Lawrence. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Do we need to not exceed? Did we get that?
I did.
Yes.
Not exceed 65,000.
Yeah. Five oh vote. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve, second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lundin to approve, and a second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Five oh vote.
Motion to adjourn?
I have a motion by Councilman Berkeley to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carlson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Five oh, please stand adjourned.